Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Steve.
How are you?
I'm doing well. It was a good weekend. How about yours?
Yeah, it was beautiful.
Yeah, it was. It was good.
Hi, Burl.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning.
I kind of like having this particular meeting virtually.
You mean at this time?
Yeah, if we're gonna have it at seven in the morning.
I think I misunderstood and thought one of the options was 7:00 PM. I don't know how to take this fake background off.
Not too dark. Anybody bring breakfast?
I think that was your assignment, Matt.
Yeah, I failed. That's okay.
I think we're just waiting for Daphne. Let me see if I can reach her. There she is. Oh, right inside text.
Morning.
Morning. Okay, I think we're all here then, right?
Yep.
Would it be helpful if I share the agenda, Burl, as we begin or?
You mean, um, no, I don't. Oh, you mean the numbers?
Yeah, so Mike's gonna need the chart, so whenever, whenever we're ready to do that, Mike will, I'll pull that up.
Okay. Is everybody ready to get started? Yep. Okay, so it is 7:01 on Monday, June 29th. Mr. Verlingo, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Chrysler?
Here.
Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
It looks like we have six items for action under Financial Business. And if there's not an objection to taking those six items together, is there a motion to approve items number one through six under Financial Business?
I'll move.
Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
Certainly.
Mr. Harrison, any discussion? I guess if you want to put the, um, the information up now. Mr. Verlingo, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. All right, this is mostly housekeeping business at year end in order to close out the activities for fiscal year 2020. There includes transfers, some temporary advances, and then final numbers related to receipts, expenditures, appropriations, et cetera. So the first item is fund-to-fund transfer, and this would be 3,486.05 from the general fund to cover the current deficit in the termination benefits fund. That fund is used to pay out retirees for any accumulated benefits that are owed. So there was a slight deficit based upon the amount in the fund minus the encumbrances. So that's the first item to be approved. Secondly, the fund-to-fund advances are temporary in nature so that we are advancing money at the end of the fiscal year to cover the deficit in these funds. Those advances will be returned to the general fund in July, so there is no actual cost to the district for this. We are moving dollars out to cover those shortfalls, again, to be returned. The third item is final estimated resources. So the amount of resources that the district has on a, on a fund basis basically is the beginning cash balance at the beginning of the fiscal year minus any encumbrances or purchase orders outstanding against that fund, plus the total receipts recorded for the year. That gives us the total amount available to appropriate for the fiscal year. And those numbers are reflected here in terms of the unencumbered cash plus the fiscal receipts on a fund basis. The fourth item are final appropriations. So the first column on this sheet represents what the appropriated amounts were as of May 31st of this fiscal year. The 629 amendment are the adjustments required to reduce this down to the maximum that we are allowed to appropriate on a per-fund basis. So basically, the level of receipts or the amount of money that is received in the prior schedule that shows the maximum that can be appropriated is the limit. These numbers reflect Um, these numbers reflect, you know, they're all within those limits. We cannot overspend, uh, what is available to spend in a fund. Uh, the difference being that we are either having, uh, funds in the process of collection. So for example, if you look at some of the grants, there is an amendment to reduce this down to a level which is still above the total receipts for the year, but we do have money that's in the process of collection, and that, uh, is the difference, plus the advances that we're doing. And then lastly, uh, we're required to set appropriation measures for FY '21. So heading into this fiscal year for FY '21, I effectively for an estimate used about 30% of prior year expenditures. It is required by October 1st of each fiscal year that the Board of Education adopt a permanent appropriation resolution. We will do that prior to that, but just to be or be able to expend funds starting July 1st, we need to pass a temporary measure. And number six is the establishment of two new funds. These are related to the CARES Act, uh, for the federal money we will be receiving uh, to reimburse for expenses related to the COVID-19 virus, and then also a governor's emergency education relief fund, which, um, is also where we may receive some dollars from the state in order to offset some of the spending that we will incur also related to that same issue. Any, any questions or concerns, discussion related to any of the items?
This is Daphne, I just want to say, uh, the, um, approach of using 30% of the prior year for the appropriation for the next fiscal year, item number five, I believe. Um, that would be a difference, I think, for our board, and so I think it makes total sense. And that we will, will true up, but once you have been able to close the, the current prior year to better able to give us the final appropriation sometime before October 1st. So just wanted to, if that looks different to our board members, that's why.
Uh, I think in, in most school districts, or at least in, in my experience, I've always used an estimate going into July 1, and then we will, you know, shortly thereafter, or sometime probably in July, uh, we will come up with what those appropriations will be, and we can either pass the permanent resolution and, at the July meeting or August meeting. As long as it's done be, prior to October 1st, we're in compliance.
Well, I appreciate the approach, thank you.
Yeah, I, um, I appreciate the explanation. It is clear, um, why the numbers are what they are on there. And I think in the past, we have done it, or not we, but we have had, um, treasurers who've done it in a variety of different ways, and it sometimes has felt unclear why we were, why they were being set the way they are. So this, um, with the explanation that you provide, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from other board members? Okay, um, if not, uh, could we, let's see, I guess, Mr. Barrett, could you stop sharing the screen and then Mr. Verlino can call the roll on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pickle Antonio?
Yes. Whoop. Oh, yeah, let's wait until the, the agenda comes down. There it is.
Okay, uh, Ms. Pickle Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Chrysler?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Mauring?
Yes.
Thank you, um, we're on letter B now, which is a discussion about the bond and PI and operating levies. And I don't know who wants to lead that, if it's Mr. Barrett or Mr. Verlino, but, um, if we could have some, I guess, discussion about what, um, what is in front of us today and what our options are. And I will turn it over to whichever of the two of you would like to lead that conversation.
Barrett, do you want to do that, or?
I can, I can start, Mike, and then maybe you can, you can, um, uh, so this resolution is a resolution of necessity. It's our second step, um, for putting a bond and a levy on the ballot in November, on November 3rd. Um, and what this resolution, um, allows us to do is to move forward with, um, the bond for, uh, phase two, um, and the PI attached to that, and, uh, I'm sorry, no, and the operation and the operating levy, um, and it's above the 10 mil limitation, and so that's why we have to do, uh, this resolution. And so, um, it's, uh, you know, in the second, whereas it's necessary for a levy, uh, additional taxes in excess of the 10 mil limitation for continuing a period of both to provide funds for the acquisition, construction, enlargement, renovation, and financing of permanent improvements and pay current operating expenses. So that's what this is about. Um, we had a discussion at our finance meeting about whether or not we wanted, um, the, uh, I mean, Mike, do you want to take over now about the, the, um, discussion we're gonna have this morning about how to do, um, this, you know, this finance, finance mechanism?
Wait, before, before we do, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Before we do that, because I was actually confused when I first looked at this resolution. Um, to me, it looks like it is the, um, PI piece and the operating piece, and that the millage is not defined for the bond piece. So I guess before we get into how we structure the PI piece, um, can we talk just a little bit about the process and why the millage for the bond piece is not in there? And then also, I know we've already explained this, but explain again what each of those components are for, the bond, the PI, and the operating? Like, what is the structure of the, the levy? And why isn't there a number yet for millage for the bond?
Yeah, so on our, uh, uh, board meeting last Thursday, we, um, had a resolution to go forth with a 205 million, 600, or 205 million and $665,000 bond, um, and that was, uh, for the largest part of phase two of our master facilities plan. This is, um, the PI, um, attached to the operating, and, um, that, um, so yeah, if, if I, uh, led you to believe that the bond was a part of, this is a PI, uh, and, uh, I think, um, we had a discussion at finance about, um, whether or not to, um, go out for the PI for exactly what we need, or to structure it in a way where we would have some leftover for PI projects. And so that's why we tabled this resolution for today. And so this is to pay for current operating expenses, um, and it's, uh, you know, due to COVID-19 or growth, and, um, just continuing expenses, um, for the district. Um, and it's, Mike, did you want to jump in here?
Oh, it includes the, uh, amount of the bond issue. So if you, if you look at the, or second, third, it then says now therefore be it resolved.
Right.
Through that language, uh, it identifies the 205 million, 665,000 dollar amount for the bonds. Uh, the amount of the millage is not included because the county auditor needs to certify what that millage will be. Uh, we, we estimate it to be 4.93 mils based upon discussion with our bond council, and the underwriters, but there's no guarantee that that is what the, uh, county auditor will certify. So, um, that's why it's in here as an amount for bonds without the millage. The PI is for the additional funds we need, the 1.5 mils for PI, which will be used strictly for the construction-related activities of the, uh, second phase of the project. Is identified because we know that is the amount, that is definite. And then the 4.26 operating mils is also identified, and that's what is based on the current forecast needed to carry us to fiscal year 2024 with our 60-day operating reserve.
It's 4.26, correct?
Correct.
For operating, yeah. So it's on page seven, sort of the middle of the page here. I, I think, I think I have it queued up here.
So this is Daphne, and I, I think the two resolutions, one and two, are, um, ma- majority the same, with the exception that number two provides for the PI levy that is, um, being requested to pay the cops', um, debt.
Yep.
That it matures at the same time that the cops' debt matures, correct?
Correct, so it's either, uh, the first resolution would be that the PI would be for a continuing period of time. So once the, uh, certificates of participation are paid off, that levy would continue to be used for permanent improvement-type activities. And in the second resolution, it's limited to 30 years, and it matches the term of the certificates of participation. So that levy will drop off the books once the debt is paid.
And I know that you already explained this in a finance committee meeting, but could you just very briefly explain again what certificate of participation is? What does that mean for people, anyone who might not know?
Okay, it's a way, it's a kind of a lease-purchase type financing where, uh, we would borrow funds against the 1.5 mil levy. Um, we, we can raise funds, that 1.5 mils will generate an, an amount of proceeds to be, to pay off that debt. Uh, so based upon the current interest rates and, um, the term of the, the debt of 30 years, uh, we can, we can calculate how much debt service is needed, and the 1.5 mils gives us enough in order to make up the gap between the 205 million of bond issue, or 205.6, and the 250 million for the total project. So we would be borrowing 44 roughly million through those certificates of participation.
Okay, and then where we kind of, um, wanted some more information when we talked about this before was the difference between, um, having that PI piece be a continuing levy versus having it termed to the 30 years. Um, and I guess could we start with Mr. Verlino, maybe giving? I, I know that we had asked for some more information about that. Um, it was provided to us by email, but if you could maybe, Mr. Verlino, start by explaining the difference between the two? And, um, any thoughts that you have on that? And then board members can chime in after that with any questions or thoughts?
Excuse me, um, yeah, so the, the only real difference, because it, the 1.5 mils will generate the same amount, same amount of debt, uh, borrowing capacity, uh, whether it be for the 30 years or longer, uh, if the levy continued. So the 1.5 mils, again, generates enough money to pay off the debt required to complete the project. And then the question was, do we want that levy to continue so that after 30 years, we would continue to collect an amount of money to be used for bus purchases, major repairs and maintenance, and that type of activity? Or do we want to match it to the term of the, the bonds, um, that we are issuing? And therefore, keep this, uh, I should say, that, that the amount of this levy will match exactly what the repayment schedule is for those bonds, um, or the cops, in this case. So that was the, the question in, in terms of, do we want to have these funds available going forward? Or do we want to keep this, uh, financing limited to the project at hand?
Can you flip back through my emails quickly enough while I also have my agenda open? But I know, um, there was a question that Ms. Mauring asked you, Mr. Verlino, related to that. I guess, could you maybe explain that, or either Ms. Mauring or Mr. Verlino?
Was that the question related to the present value of the?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, um, so that the amount of money, uh, to be raised by the 1.5 mils, um, i- if you were to discount that back, we would, in, in terms of what that, the value of that money would be in the future, it would be something less than half, I believe, of what we would be collecting today. So, um, the, the question came up as to, well, i- is it worthwhile to have this continuing? Because in 30 years, those funds will not be worth nearly as much as they are in today's dollars.
Okay.
The, the, uh, capital improvement needs of the district, um, you know, will be uh, something that will be an ongoing issue, a- as, uh, even though this solution that's been proposed for phase two of the project, Mr. Barrett, you can correct me, but I, I believe that, you know, based on enrollment studies, uh, based upon projected growth in the community, that this should keep the district, uh, whole in terms of facilities for the next 50, 60 years.
Right. Yeah, and in the purpose statement here, um, basically say that, that this is, this project will, um, provide our facility, classroom needs, our space, um, to, uh, accommodate additional, uh, student population growth, and, um, and it'll, it'll help us, you know, for the next 50 years. You're exactly right, um, uh, not to do this is to, um, you know, live with crowded hallways, um, trailers and parking lots, and, you know, um, very crowded buildings. And so, yeah, that's, that's correct, Mike. Um, it'll, it'll set us up, um, in a good place for the next several decades.
Okay, um, before I open it up to, I guess, questions from board members, is there anything that either you, Mr. Barrett, or Mr. Verlino? Anything else you want to add at all? And then I'll open it for questions.
I, I would just like to add that this is, um, you know, a, an important moment in the history of our school district to, um, to look at our student population growth. Many communities around us have grown at a, you know, exponential rate. Now that is happening in Ghana, and, um, we really need to address our capacity, um, needs. Uh, we're over capacity in our elementary and middle schools, and will soon be, uh, in terms of classroom space with our high school. At our high school, as soon as the bell rings, we're out of capacity. The hallways are extremely crowded, and then, um, I encourage, um, anyone who's interested in seeing, our master facilities, uh, presentation on the recommendations. There's a video in there that kind of shows the, how crowded it is, uh, when the bell rings and students have to move from the third floor to the first floor. And so we know this is an ask of our community. And so we know this is an ask of our community. But it is a need, it's, it's not, sometimes in school districts, you discuss what are needs and what are wants. This is a definite need. And I think it's, it's time that we address it and we're excited to kind of move forward and have deliberative discussions around. Why we decided this as a, as a master facilities committee, why we brought this recommendation forward. And how it will help us with our growth. And provide not just warm, safe, dry learning spaces, but learning spaces that are inspiring, bright and engaging. And so we're really excited to move forward with it and. I, I thank the board for, you know, its deliberation around. All of this, but at, at this meeting and this, you know, we've come to, I think, a, a, the right decision to go out. For the P I exactly what we need. I think the analysis and the thinking through that is, is really, really important. And we continue to try to kind of make our buildings better. We had engineers study them and we know exactly what we need to do and the twenty fourteen bond. Or, I'm sorry, permanent improvement levy is, is helping us do that. And we will have other needs in the future in terms of that, but these new spaces to handle. Our growth are going to be crucial to the success of our school district. So Mike, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to say?
No, I think you've, you've covered it, Steve, I. It, it is a, it is a big ask. I did have a call the other day from a, a resident, you know, asking about the, the amounts and, you know, the need. I, I think there is. A willingness in Gahanat to support our schools and I think that's been shown over the last number of years. It's, it's a pivotal point, as you say, in terms of. Go, moving forward and. Advancing the district, so. The, the one thing I, I would add is that although the millage is in total ten point six nine. In, in terms of the four point two six plus the one point five, plus the estimated bond millage currently. That be effectively reduced because of increased valuations that we will see July first. As the board knows, and I think many in the community know. That as valuations increase, millage amounts decrease so that there is no increase in funding due to inflation. So. In this particular case, the bond issue, although it has to be put on the ballot at the current valuation due to the increase that we're. Expecting due to revaluation, we will see a drop in that millage immediately beginning January first.
Sorry, go ahead.
That could be significant. You know, in excess of one mill. One to one point five mils.
So the estimated effective millage is somewhere between?
Nine and nine point two or so mils.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to board member questions, Mr. Barrett, can you stop sharing your screen? I don't think there, I mean, I think anyone who's looking has probably seen, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Board members, comments, questions?
I'll start, I, I just, I thank you guys for the explanations you've given. I, you know, what the, the information that's compelling to me and I think. Will need to be shared widely with our constituents is that. In this school year that we're concluding, we're at a hundred and sixteen percent capacity. For our K five buildings and a hundred and four for percent for our six to eight buildings. And we know that the high school. Has really because of the, the growth in students, size of students and then the hallways and the. Repeated additions to that building have made it not functionally safe. Nor convenient for our students to get from one end to the other in a safe and. And efficient way, so. And then the cost of the H V A C at that high school and, and the bathroom requirements. It really doesn't make sense to try to renovate that building. And so that's, I believe, the deliberations that the master facility committee have taken to heart. Over the past, what is it, three years maybe at minimum?
Yeah, a little bit over three years, yeah.
Little over three years, so there's, there's been a long time. That this has, has been studied and. We appreciate it, the culmination of it coming to us. Sadly, we are in a pandemic, right, so. It, it's a kind of a tough time to be putting such a joyous and positive thing out there, but. We must do this, right, at this time because to honor the work of the master facility committee. And knowing that the, that this doesn't happen on a dime, right, like the, the ramp up time. Even if this passes, we didn't have two years of, of preparation before a high school can be started. So I think keeping that timeframe in mind. I would propose that we use the time certain for P I. Of the thirty year term to match the thirty years of the, of the debt payment that we're paying. One, to honor and respect our, our voters and match the repayment to the, to the term. There, you know, economic reasons, right? The inflation factor and then the, the lack of making, marking to market on the assessed value. So my preference would be to, to go with the thirty year term. I do want to make sure that the language of that resolution, I know I talked to, to Steve, I've had a constituent. Share with me, we're basically adding twenty four classrooms for the middle schools, which is equal to the classroom numbers in a particular middle school. And so I raised the question to him, why? Since we're adding in essence. A new middle school. With twenty four classrooms. Would it make more sense economically and qualitatively to have a new middle school? Perhaps in the Black Lake area? So does the, the wording preclude? That happening if that? Analysis would come true?
No, the, the, we will deliberate about that in our master facilities committee. The wording does not preclude us from pivoting to that if. You know, we deliberate and we bring the board a recommendation, so the language is broad enough so that we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any other board members have comments in general? Thoughts about which of the two versions of the resolution? Make more sense, ultimately, when I ask for a motion, it's going to have to be for the version. That time limits the P I or the version that makes it continuous, so it would be helpful, I guess, to hear what anybody else is thinking. In general and about which of the two versions? Makes more sense?
I just have a question, if, if we're not putting the time limits on it. The amount, you know, if we're talking to the vote, the voters and the residents, the amount will be. Like some certain, it's going to be an amount of money specific, even though the term is longer. Say if it's continuing, but if we're telling the voters, this is how much we're needing. Whether it's over thirty one years or longer, that's the amount that we're. Going to get.
Correct, if, if it's continuing, it will go on the, on the docket as the millage at one point five at current valuation. As valuation increases, that millage will decrease, so we will continue to receive the same amount every year.
I think, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but I think Brian is asking about an overall amount, is it a? He, I think he's asking, is it a fixed overall amount that the district would receive? And I think the answer to that is no, if it's continuing, we would continue to receive funds. At that millage amount beyond the term of the thirty years, right?
That's correct. Yes, it would continue, the value of it in today's dollars will continue to decrease, but we will receive that same. Fixed stream of funds in perpetuity if it's a continuing levy.
Mr. Hairston, did, did that answer the question that you had? Okay.
Um, I guess I just have a couple of things, the first is, you know, I think that I'd, I'd like to point out on the record and I hope that people are watching, maybe not at seven AM, but that they're going to go back and watch this meeting in a later date. I mean, we've had months of community deliberation and discussions, I, there's some. Really good information that Mrs. Piccolantonio put out on a couple of the social media sites. Allowing people to go back and kind of visually see what those conversations look like and the amount of work that the district did. With the master facilities committee to solicit input from. The constituents, from the people who we represent and bring that information back to the master facilities group, which is also made up of. Citizens, the people we represent and their, their hard work was just absolutely extraordinary, I mean, when you think about. And you go through some of those master facilities meetings that were open to the public, we answered lots of questions. And you can tell the passion and the conviction and the time that they spent agonizing over. Whether or not we should have a second high school, whether, you know, the, the building structure should remain intact or whether we should just do improvements. What the, they asked us, the, the community asked us to go back and do an enrollment study, so we did. And, and really to just take our time and collect data and, and do what was needed to be done, I think our original goal was. To hopefully have phase two on the ballot even this past spring and we slowed down in order to get community input and while. Not everybody may have participated, what I hope that voters see is that there was a conscious effort to formulate a plan around what. Their, their neighbors and their peers and those who did participate wanted. And so I just can't thank enough the members of the community that participated in all of those sessions, the master facilities committee. And then also the administration for, for hosting and really being deliberate and not making this closed door meetings about. About what the district should be in the next twenty, thirty, forty years. With respect to the operating levy, I think this board passed fiscal responsibility, a set of fiscal responsibilities several years ago. And made serious cuts and restructured how the district was. Operating and I think to make sure that every dollar that we spend goes to kids first and so. While we don't all love the fact that schools are funded through this mechanism, that in the state of Ohio is how it's done. And I think we have to respond to that, I think what this also does though. Is it supports the great number of classes that we have, the quality programming that we bring to the students. But I also think that it abides by our fiscal responsibilities, which is that we have sixty days cash on hand. We understand now and people often wonder why it is that you need to have a savings account. But when you have a pandemic that sweeps the world in the amount of time that COVID nineteen did. And, and we see the consequences of that and we understand the sensitivity of the timing of this. But what this does, and I think especially in our current state of affairs, is, is let our constituents know that. We want to put your kids first and we want to put education first and that in the community is what we should be doing. But I also, and then this is my last thought, and then I'll step down off the soapbox at seven twenty in the morning. I, I, the last thing I want to say is that I support. Running the P I concurrent with the bond issue and not having it continue beyond the bond issue. And, and the reason I support that and, and I understand. You know, and I'm glad we had this great dialogue and that's part of what makes Gahanis so great is that we can start to head in a certain direction, but have meaningful dialogue and discussion and gather data in order to. To go in a different direction, but I hope that sends a message to the voters that we, we are not asking for more than what we need. We're not asking you to fund into, you know. Permanently, something that we can't define for you, and so we are specifically defining what it is that we're asking for. We think that we've listened to the, the community and we're not asking you to do more, we're just asking you to do what needs to be done in order to take care of our kids. And that's, that's my thought.
Thanks, Ms. Chrysler, Mr. Campbell, anything from you?
Not much, I also support the running the P I concurrent with the thirty year term. That's all for now.
Thank you, I guess I, I should follow up and ask you, Mr. Hairston, do you have any thoughts at all about? The, the two options that are in front of us with regard to the term of the P I? I know you asked a question, but.
No, I'm good.
Okay. I don't want to repeat anything that anyone else has already said, but I guess I do just. I want to make the point that we are all. Well aware. Of the difficult time that we are all in, that our community is in, that our community members are in. Many of us are also, I mean, we're, we're living in this difficult time too. And all of us and all of our members of our master facility committee. Have had a lot of conversation about the timing of this, I guess I just. Again, like as Ms. Chrysler said, I don't know if anyone's actually watching us at seven o'clock this morning. But if anyone goes back and watches this meeting. We have, we have had a lot of conversation and a lot of community dialogue and a lot of data. For many, many years about this, this is something that. The, the assessing of our facilities. The assessing of our, of our projected enrollment, those are questions that all started. Before I think any of us were on this board and before Mr. Barrett or Mr. Verlengo were here. This is a process that has gone on for, for many years. Just in the more, I guess, recent times since we passed phase one of the master facility plan. And with that passage of phase one, there came a promise to have additional. Community conversations specifically about what the plan for a high school solution would look like, I guess I just want to kind of remind everybody. We did have those community conversations, there were either three or four. In-person community meetings where we went through. A, a real process with all of those who participated, there was actually tremendous participation, I thought, from the community. In those, in those meetings. And in addition to those in-person meetings, there was. It, there were in-person meetings with staff and with students and surveying of students to get their input. Again, that was specifically about a high school solution, I know that the high school specifically is something that this community has talked about for many, many, many years. So if, if there are people who have questions about how the final. Recommendation was made, I would urge community members to reach out to people who serve on the master facility committee. Reach out to any of us, we would be more than happy to share. And I know the members of the master facility committee would too, how that conclusion, the final conclusion was arrived at. With all of that input. I also, I guess. Given the fact that, that all of those conversations happened before the pandemic, I, a lot of people might not know this, so I'm just. I guess going to let people know if they don't, the master facility committee met. Several times, once we entered this pandemic with. with the idea of revisiting all of the recommendations that they thought that they had come to. They had a lot of difficult conversation acknowledging this new situation that we were in and revisiting the idea of whether or not their recommendation made sense substantively and timing-wise based on this the situation that we're in now. I know that those conversations weren't easy and I guess I just want to publicly thank all of the members of the committee and administration who participated in those really difficult conversations. We then, after all of that, we thought it made a lot of sense to to re-engage our community. And unfortunately, we weren't, you know, we couldn't do that in person anymore. But we had then a series of three virtual community meetings. So that the master facility committee could talk through that process with the community and provide opportunity for the community to ask questions and engage. And again, I know, you know, this has been a very unusual, very stressful time for a lot of people. And I know that maybe not everybody was aware of those meetings or was able to participate in them. We tried, we did, I really think that the administration did worked as hard as they could to to make sure people were aware of them. I know information went out over district email and also over social media. We really, I feel really strongly like everybody bent over backwards to try to give people opportunities to engage. And I don't say that because there won't be more of that. We need to do more of those engagement opportunities and provide time and space for people to ask questions. This is, nobody doubts, nobody underestimates what it is that we're putting in front of our community. And this is also the culmination of years of time and deliberations spent on the issue of what is it that this district needs in order to best serve our kids for the years to come? And and I guess just in my opinion, I I think that's what that's what was asked of this board. That's what has been asked of this administration. And that's what was asked of the master facility committee. I am incredibly proud of all of that hard work and all of that engagement and all of the people who, community members who engaged with us and asked questions. So I I do know that this is a difficult time and at the same time, this is this is something that it is exciting for our district. It will finally address the needs that this district has now and will have for years to come. So I do, I do think it's exciting too. And as far as the difference between the 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 two resolutions that are in front of us, I guess I too feel like it makes more sense for us to go with the version that limits the term of the PI levy. I acknowledge that there will be facility needs and maintenance needs that that we are going to need to do. And that's something that the district hasn't completely invested in over the years. But I do think, I guess, kind of as Ms. Moore and Ms. Chrysler explain, I think that this is a community that really values knowing what they're being asked to do and why they're being asked to do it. And I I just think that that'll be something that we're going to have to do down the road is really explain clearly what are the facility needs? What is a reasonable amount of money for a district of this size to spend on maintaining its buildings? So for now, I think I've heard from most of us that the motion that I'm going to ask for is going to be related to the termed amount of the the PI. Before I, I guess, before I ask for a motion, I'm just going to go back around. Does anybody else have anything else that they want to say or any other questions?
One of the things that we haven't mentioned is the state cuts that happened in FY '20. So this fiscal year, we were reduced by 1.6 million. Mike and his forecast expects similar reductions in FY '21 and '22. So over $4 million in in cuts, including the FY '20 cuts are imminent, given the state's budget. And so that makes the operating piece critical. We're going to have to make reductions. We're looking at reductions that don't affect the classroom is, you know, right now. But, you know, the the coming years are going to be very, very difficult. And, you know, more reductions will be coming and we're not exactly sure what they will be. But we know that the state has a huge budget hole right now. And we know this is difficult for everyone. And then the other point I would mention is that we've deferred this ask for, in particular, a high school for a long time. And that has made this project very costly. It used to be that construction, commercial construction costs would go up 3% a year or so in central Ohio. Lately, they've been accelerating at about 3% a quarter. When you think of all the public and private projects that are happening in central Ohio and you think of Columbus as the, you know, fastest growing city in the Midwest with the with the, you know, it's just accelerating everywhere. And so I think OSU has something like $3 billion worth of construction in the pipeline. I think they've deferred some of it as of late. But at the end of the day, it's it's going to be even more expensive the longer we wait. And when you build commercial construction, what drives the cost is square footage price. And so just recently, it's 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 skyrocketed. And a lot of what drives that is the shortage of labor, the shortage of construction labor. And so I think, you know, for the Lincoln Elementary Phase One project, we had one electrical contractor bid on that. It's just, there isn't enough. There's more work than there are workers to do it. And so that's pushing things up quite a bit. So I think looking at why now and, you know, you know, with operating and and the building project, those are some reasons that I think are really important to consider.
I have a procedural question. So we have both resolutions on the agenda. Are we just voting on the one resolution? Because it sounds like, or do we have to let the other one ask you the question, but let it let it die?
I would, I would ask for the question for number one. And if there is no motion, then it just dies from lack of emotion. And then we would move on to option number two.
Okay, I can, I can do it that way. So ask you, Mr. Verlingo, you're recommending that I ask for a motion on each of them separately? And if there's, okay. Anything else for any, from anyone else before I make those requests? Okay, is there a motion to approve a resolution of necessity with a continuing term of the PI levy? Item number one under letter C, general business. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve a resolution of necessity with a 30-year term on a per on the permanent improvement piece of the levy, which is item number two under letter C, general business?
So moved.
Ms. Moore, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Chrysler? Any additional discussion? Mr. Verlingo, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pickle Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Chrysler?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion about that? Okay, Mr. Verlingo, could you call the roll one more time?
Ms. Chrysler?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pickle Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Cam?
Yes.
I have 7:56. I was going to say PM. It's 7:56 AM and we are adjourned.
That's definitely not PM.